Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item 4.1, recognitions. At this time, I'd ask the Board to please join me out front as we recognize our Pride Teachers Employee Recipients for the month of November.
Tonight, the Board of Education acknowledges our Pride Recognition Program winners for the month of November. Pride stands for proudly recognizing individuals demonstrating excellence and recognizes the efforts of teachers and staff who are engaged in exceptional work across the district. This year, our schools nominate and select their own teachers and employees during a designated month, which allows the program to honor more individuals from every school in every department across our district. We thank all of our generous district partners for helping us to make this program a success. We ask you to hold your applause until the end of each category. Awardees, as your name is called, please stand and remain standing until all in your category have been announced. Then we'll invite you to come forward and be congratulated by the Board and Dr. Sparlin. The first awardees are the Allied First Bank Teachers of the Month. What teachers do day in and day out is vital to the success of our students. They plant the seeds of learning and help our students grow. The following teachers have been named as our Teachers of the Month for November. From Bonarstick Junior High School, Anna Deal, social worker, and Erin Skaggs, physical education teacher; from Wolf's Crossing Elementary School, Janine Thacker, second grade teacher; and Megan Giacamino, literacy specialist; and from Homestead Elementary, Nicole Hunt, social worker, and Luann Girth, literacy specialist. Congratulations, teachers! We'll invite the building administrators from those three schools forward to join the Board and Dr. Sparlin and our Allied Bank representative for the photo. Congratulations! Our next awardees this evening are our Employees of the Month. This award is given in appreciation of individual employees' ability to not only go above and beyond, but also for their ability to reflect the true meaning of service. Our Huntington Learning Center Employees of the Month for the month of November are: From Bonarstick Junior High School, Kim Goodall, Student Services Secretary; From Wolf's Crossing Elementary School, Julie Wolfe, speech pathologist; And from Homestead Elementary, Jen Perez, Teacher Assistant. Congratulations, employees! We again invite the building administrators here forward for the photo. Congratulations, everyone!
On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the public for attending tonight's meeting. We value the feedback we receive from our residents and encourage everyone to take an active interest in their public school system. Residents interested in speaking to the Board this evening are asked to have completed a comment card and presented it to the secretary to the Board. When the secretary calls your name, I ask that you come to the microphone, state your name and address for the public record, and provide your feedback. Please note the comments are limited to five minutes per person and that no discussion of personnel matters or responses to questions are permitted. The Board does not participate in discussion during public comment. Follow-up to your questions or concerns will be addressed by administration through the contact information provided on the comment card. Thank you.
Jessica Estes?
My name's Jessica Estes and I live 2501 Cushing Lane. Good evening, and tonight I would like to come here and speak about the prices for activities and electives in school. In the beginning of the year, every student has to be enrolled and has to pay fees for classes, books, sports, etc. Having to pay extra money to join clubs and driver's ed and any other elective a student decides to join can truly affect the price of a parent's bill. On average, about 57% of students join an additional activity and that adds much cost to one's bill. For those students who don't have an opportunity to take driver's ed outside of school where there's an option on how often you drive, where in some cases it becomes more flexible and more of an experience for a student. The average student pays about $400 for inside of school and outside of school can cost anywhere from $400 to $750. But you get a full hour of driving with an instructor with a larger range of area and being charged around the same amount of money for less time on the road, being limited to 40 minutes, and less of an area, less of an experience. And sharing this experience one semester with 20 or more other students isn't giving you much of a chance. The school also makes a parent or adult pay all fees by a deadline. And for those whose income is not the highest, that can be a lot of money going all out at once. Sports fees are about $300 per season. And if you have, or if you are included in many sports or multiple seasons, that can range up very high. In my opinion, a student's fee shouldn't stop them from being part of a sport or a school dance. For example, earlier this school year, many students got a call from the school explaining that if they didn't pay your driver's ed fee or any fees on hold, you cannot be a part of your sport or attend the homecoming dance, even though they haven't taken the class yet. Personally, school fundings should not be taken so much out of school, out of student pockets, because it is limiting their family to many vacations or activities in the summer. There are classes where it makes sense when you have to pay, but prices shouldn't be so high. As another example, if you are in AP government and politics, a student has to pay $100 to take the test. Yes, the state constitution test is way more expensive outside of school, but students shouldn't be charged extra money for being in a higher level class. In conclusion, the school should cut down on fees for students, activities, sports, and electives. The changes do not have to be dramatic, but cutting down costs by just a little can really help a family save money and still give their kids the best opportunity for what they want and need to do in school. Thank you for your time and listening to my views on current fees on students. Have a nice night.
Lanaya Wilkie?
Good evening, my name's Lanaya Wilkie and my address is 1939 Indian Hill Lane. I am a sophomore here at Oswego East and I participate in cross-country and track. And I'm here today to speak about my most recent civics project and how it relates to overpriced sports fees and affecting the students and their families here at Oswego East. This has been a hot topic in households and in your meetings for the last few years and I would like to share some of my findings on it. So this past fall at Oswego East, we had around 550 fall athletes attending and that is $160,000 that is obviously taken from the students, but we still don't know where the money's going because you guys are still asking for fundraisers from us and we're still paying for our own gear where this $160,000 could be going towards that, but it's not. And here's some results from my research. Oswego East pays $300 just for one sport while Naperville pays $60 and Plainfield and West Aurora Schools each pay $130 for one sport. In addition, School District 155 in Crystal Lake area, there is $100 per student, a $200 max per student yearly, and $400 max per household yearly, meaning in your household you never pay $400 or more for a sport, depending on how many people live in your house. Some additional facts: You are losing great athletes because of the price, because parents cannot pay the $300. And some, I've talked to other people, like in my classes, and they are only limited to one sport or one club, so their parents are only letting them play in one sport instead of two, three, or more clubs. And another thing, I have, my two friends are twins and they play for the volleyball team here, but they don't get a discount, so their mom's paying $600 for them to play volleyball, plus they have to pay for the gear and they have to do fundraiser stuff. And yeah, so thank you for your time, thank you for listening.
Amy Jackson?
Yeah, I just, my name's Amy Jackson, I live at 630 Carnation Drive. I just want to say I feel for the kids, but I'll say, our taxes are way too high here. Our values have not gone up. I don't mind, as a parent, I don't mind paying for what my kid does. So if my kid's athletic like those girls, you pay for that service at that time. If your kid does AP tests, my daughter does, I pay $400, $500, maybe $500 for AP tests this year. She wants to do that. Wait till you go to college, it's rude awakening. It's not just $500, it's $26,000 if you have no scholarship, even with scholarship with that. The problem is, you know, our taxes are going up. I think this district has to live within its means. And when you compare us to other districts, what we fall short in, in money is, we don't have a big industrial part. Naperville has big industry, Plainfield has some industry. All those areas, those girls are saying, have industrial areas that have, also contribute to the tax base. We are heavily, our community is heavily based on, our funding is based on the houses, right? There's no AMOC or just a business, right, that's pulling money in. That's a problem for us, a huge problem. And I think Troy, who just got voted in last year, even I, he lives down the street from me, he said, "We need to increase our business tax to increase the funding to our school." That means the different Route 34 areas. I mean, there's a couple of areas around a thing. We can't stop hitting every homeowner. My taxes have gone up like $200 last, from this year, I looked, last year to this year, $200 with no increase. So if your increase would have gone in, I would have been $300, $300, $400. I don't know, you know, don't remember exact numbers on that, but it would not have been just $200 with nothing. Until we, until we get better, I think this, we have a responsibility to live within our means. I wish I could just say, oh, you know, I wish I could go to my son's college and go, you know, "I really don't want to pay $26,000 a year." You know, can I just raise taxes on you guys and then, you know, you can, or just go to some other source and say, "I don't want to pay this. When I want this free, I want this free." Things do cost money and we just go, this district has been just spending and spending. And without, I think at different times, they thought they had the money and then they pull it back and then we, you know what, there's a couple instances when I was talking to a story with us building buildings, we spent money with dual language, we didn't want to cut, we added, because my gosh, that's what everybody wanted. We had options to save when we didn't. And I, as a taxpayer, who's, I have subsidized my, I have subsidized my children in many things. And as a parent, yes, it did, I didn't take a vacation that year. I had a choice. I could do this with my kids, I could do that. Money is not unlimited. So I hope we do not put a referendum forward. And their silent majority, I think, has spoken twice on your guys in putting that referendum. You know, I'm, if it goes forward, I am going to probably try to lead a referendum and start the advertising, "Don't let this go through. I want this district to live within its means" and stop just, just saying, "We're going to raise taxes again, we're going to raise taxes again." My husband and I both are tired of it. We both work hard and it's, you know, colleges is, is, we, I have two next year, so believe me, every $200 that I save, you know, maybe chump change the sum, but for me, it's, it's, it's money that, you know, if, my kids aren't in, I'm contributing quite a bit. I will not have two, two kids in next year. So, so next year, the next set of students are going to have to pay their fees. I mean, the girls really want, parking fees to park a car is expensive here. I don't care about doing it, I have one more year of it. Then the next parent's got to pay the fees if they're going to have their kid drive. If you're going to use the services, you got to pay for it. In a district that doesn't have the money to just say, "Here, we're going to like, give..." Different areas have different mechanisms and we are so, through, to our detriment. And I, I don't know, I hope this changes for our communities as a whole, but we are so homeowner-driven that we can't just keep saying, "We're going to put it on the ballot again." You tried twice and it failed. Can, and I'll, can I add on a side note? The same time you put the referendum through, I agree, I think they're going to try to put, if they're going to raise it progressive, and you're going to bring a lot of no vote, and I could be wrong, but I'm not sure, but, you know, the state will. And if you put the state on the same ballot as your referendum, there'd be a lot of no votes that you can bring out just for the fact of the timing of the referendum, if that's when it's planned. I don't know if that's what your thought is. I'm a little confused. I was trying to read the Board notes.
Thank you.
You know, think about the taxpayer. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Item 6.1, Board Member Comments.
I'll go first. Happy Veterans Day to everybody. I have on my Old Navy shirt because a lot of people in my family were in the Navy. And I just want to say that I think it's not only what veterans do when they're serving, but what veterans do for our communities once they're out, because my sister, who is a veteran, and my brother-in-law, and my brother, and my nephew, and my other nephew, they do a lot of good once they're done being in the military. So that's a whole nother layer of benefit. I want to give a shout-out to the event that I went to yesterday, which was sponsored by Epic, which is Exceptional, Parents of Exceptional Children. And the speaker was Beverly Johns and the robotics team came by to let everybody know that no matter who you are, if you are interested in doing robotics, you are included. So if you're a special ed student, you can be in robotics. And if you're a student who maybe doesn't have an interest in other clubs or the ability to participate in athletics, you can do robotics. And they're going to have an open house, uh, no, no, in January, or December, on the 12th, at 6:00 PM at 71 Stone Hill, to let people see what it would be like to be on the robotics team if anybody's interested. The speaker that I saw yesterday was about bullying in the district and what we can all do as teachers, community members, administrators, any kind of staff at all, to make sure that someone is not only stopping behaviors that are inappropriate or unkind, but also what we can do to make sure the students are seeing that we care about them. Because that's super important to make sure that kids don't end up giving up. And the last thing I have for my comments is that I understand that two of our folks that are up here, Kristi and Ursula, did the hobler-gobbler on the weekend, which raises money for a charity and that's very nice and that's very cool. And they had to run all around Oswego. And there are probably some other people who've done hobler-gobbler, raise your hand. Anybody? Nope. Oh, there's somebody in the back of the room there. So that's my whole report. I think it was a good event.
First, I'll share a little fun and exciting news. I think many of us are probably aware, but shout-out to the Oswego Girls Co-op Swim Team. A week ago Saturday, they set a record, and that record is 12 conference championships in a row. Coach Lubner made a presentation at the banquet last Monday night and he was informing the athletes of what a special program they were part of this year. So we still have sectionals and state meet ahead of us, but the point was made and it was heard loud and clear, our junior varsity team could beat most varsity teams in this state. We are probably the number two or number three swim team in the state right now. And we're going to find out in a couple of weeks, so looking forward to that. Congratulations to all the girls and everything they've done so far this season.
I will say that I had the opportunity to attend both of the OHS Curricular Band Concerts last week. They were fantastic. I think you can watch it on their Facebook page. Highly recommend it. And then this Wednesday, they are having a big band night, which is open to the public and it's going to be amazing. The Thompson Junior High Jazz Band and all of the OHS Jazz Bands, as well as a professional band, Heritage Band, will be performing. It starts at 7:00 PM. There is an admission. It's $10 for adults and $5 for students or senior citizens, but it'll be a great show.
I was not able to attend any of the festivities day around the district to honor Veterans Day, but I do want to express my appreciation to the administration at all the buildings that continue to put those events together that allow students to invite veterans that are in their family to express and to help instill the value and the, the price that a lot of veterans, or sacrifices that a lot of veterans make in the course of their life. So I hope that continues to happen in this district, the administration continues to see the value in, in showing the respect for Veterans Day and anytime we have the opportunity to help to carry on the traditions to the younger generations, I think there is value in that. So thanks to the building principals and administration who put those events together today.
I want to echo that and then also add in, wow, during a snowstorm. I was able to attend Trauber's Breakfast this morning, which was going to be a program, but as we know, the weather got a little dicey, especially around Wolf's Crossing. But it was a great event and I know that the veterans who were there really appreciated being recognized, veterans of all ages and all branches of service. And then I was able in the afternoon to attend part of the Plank Presentation and Assembly. Also very nicely done, as always, they do an annual quilt of valor presented to different veterans each year, made by one of the teachers' mothers, which is kind of cool. I also want to say thank you, Belinda Lita Plank, for hosting us at our public forum last Monday. They had a really nicely set-up cafeteria and they all were in the front row and I did forget to thank them last week, so thank you from this week. So aside from those things, I just wanted to give a shout-out to our Director of Transportation. I know that they had a really rough morning as well. I was hearing about some icy conditions on some of the roads and thank them for the timely communication that they had to parents. I knew actually before my kid had walked out of the door that the bus was going to be late, so we drove, which I'm not sure if that was a better idea or not, but we, we did get there. So thank you to Dawn and the team over there for all the hard work that they were doing. And thank you to our veterans for the service that you've given to our country. We couldn't be here without it. And we appreciate the sacrifices that you make for your families and for yourselves in order to continue to uphold the things that keep us safe. So thank you again. And that's it.
Board Committee Report, 6.2. There was Policy and Legislative Advisory Committee.
There was. We did, we met on Monday, October 28th. We did some stuff. We reviewed the Board of Ed Advisory Committee procedures, OMA requirements, all that good stuff. We talked a little bit about some of the press, the policy, educational, what's Policy Reference Education Subscription Service puts out. So we updated a bunch of policies. We had some questions on a few more that will be coming back at our next meeting in December. There was a couple that we had questions on. A lot of them are on 2.3, or I'm sorry, a lot of them are on the agenda tonight at 9.3. We had a couple of questions, like one was on communications to and from the Board. I guess my question specifically was, when we get, when we get questions from the community, how do we, since we're supposed to speak as one Board, how do we know who responded, how they responded, so that when we force a run into them at a football game or a grocery store, we know what was already said? So I just, I had some questions on that. They were clarifying some of that. We struggled with some wording in regard to how they were wording the time limits on the open meeting, so that one's coming back. We had some people ask about fund balances. Arguing about 20% or 15% and then there was a question that was asked regarding, what's the difference between following, between calculated and under ISBE School District Financial Profile and annual expenditures in the operating fund that they wanted some clarification on? And then Dr. Sparlin gave us a recap of his legislative accomplishments and we got done early. Our next meeting's December 2nd. Cool. Sounds like you did do some stuff.
Okay. And item 6.3, Superintendent's Report.
Well, good evening, Board. Last week I had the opportunity to take a picture with OHS student Eric Drolle, who scored a perfect 36 on his ACT, which is obviously a wonderful accomplishment and something to celebrate, so congratulations to Eric. I also had the opportunity to meet Christine Corpus from Oswego East. I also had the opportunity to meet Christine Corpus from Oswego East on Friday morning, and Christine also received a perfect score on her ACT as well. And so congratulations to Christine. Less than two tenths of 1% of students who take the ACT score a perfect 36. And we've only had two other students in the history of 308 to score a perfect 36, and we haven't had one since 2004. So you can see what a, what a major accomplishment that is, and then not only to have one, but we had two within two weeks and one at H.I. School, so something to be celebrated there. Uh, last Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend the Senior Center fundraiser. The room was packed and Whitetail Elvis was in the house, and it was a lot of fun there, but it was for a great event. We raised a lot of money for the Senior Center, so that was nice. And on Saturday, October or November 2nd, I also had the opportunity to watch the girls swim and dive, win their 12th conference straight title. And I tell you, if you've, if you've never been to a conference swim, we hosted it here at Oswego East. The, uh, the, it's, it's intense. It's intense, and the excitement in the, in the room is just awesome. So congratulations to the girls. Uh, this past Saturday, I attended the OHS second round of the, uh, of the football playoffs. It was, I've been watching high school football for a long time, and it was an incredible game. Unfortunately, the Panthers got beaten in the, in the, uh, in the second, in a double time overtime, and absolutely incredible. Uh, today I started at the Grand Park with the Veterans' Day celebrations, as you mentioned, Lori, and it really, we really do, uh, do a wonderful job acknowledging our veterans and, uh, and it's wonderful to see them in the classes, working with the kids, sharing their stories, and it really is something special. And last but by far not least, uh, this Friday, November 15th, is Board Member Appreciation Day. So I'd like to publicly, publicly thank the Board for each and each and every one of you for everything that you do, volunteering all of your time, and what you do for our community, and the governance of our school district. So on behalf of the school district, I'd like to publicly thank each and every one of you for what you do, and that is my report for this evening.
Was there one more maybe about cross-country?
Um, I-
Boys cross-country, state?
I don't have that one written down.
Uh, OE, Boys Cross Country, came in fifth in state is what the hand up in the back says, fifth. Um, so congratulations to Boys Cross Country for, I think, their highest finish ever.
Yeah, we, you know what, we, with our fall sports, we've got, our, our teams at both schools did really, really good. And, uh, at the, I believe at December 9th Board Meeting, we'll be acknowledging some of our kids, and I'll provide a list of all the different activities to the Board of Education.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seven Presentations.
All right. Uh, Item 7.1 is a State Report Card Presentation tonight. Faith is going to share some information regarding our recent designations on the State School Report Card. Faith?
Great, thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to talk a little bit about what's available on the Illinois Report Card. Uh, this information is available to anyone. You can go online and see a lot of this data, uh, and I'll just be giving some of the highlights. Maybe. There we go, go back one, all right. So these are the fun facts, uh, the report card that you can get on and look at. Uh, it has the, on the very cover, the student characteristics, our overall enrollment and our proficiency for ELA, math and science, and that is the combined of the SAT test as well as the IAR or Illinois Assessment of Readiness. It also has graphs of the SAT test. This is the high school tests that are taken, and it shows the district comparison and the state comparison. You can see that the district is higher than the state in English Language Arts and also in Mathematics. On this particular graph, all green is meets and exceeds, so everything that is green means that you have passed the test or at the proficiency level. The darker green is if you have exceeded the state standards. Also, this is available by subgroup, uh, and all of the different areas that look at this. Again, this graph is the SAT test, so it shows the differences between low-income, special education, and different races, again, for English Language Arts and for Mathematics. I wanted to highlight one of the types of graphs that is available. So if you look at the very top, the ELA, uh, and low-income, and then male and female, those are the exact graphs that you can get off of the Illinois Report Card. The bottom section are, is a chart that I've added. When you go to the actual Illinois Report Card, you can hover over the different boxes, and it will give you some of these numbers. Since this is a snapshot and we're not live, it doesn't show that. So if you think back to the last report that I gave where we talked about what our plans for improvement are, and I highlighted some of our different achievement gap between uh, male and female, and also low-income and non-low-income, you can look at this at, the light green is us, uh, and if you look at that, our achievement gap is 24 percentage points and the state's is 30 percentage points. But you can also look at that our non-low-income is a little bit lower than the state's non-low-income scores. If you slide over to the right-hand side of the slide, that's male and female difference, and our split is a little bit higher than what the state average split is, but both the girls and the boys outperform what the state averages. So it gives you lots of different types of interme- and information when you look at this. And again, you could spend hours on this site, and you can pick and choose lots of different ways to look at the data. I've just given you a sample. I will be meeting with the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee, and we'll be going into this a lot more depth and having some time just to explore the website. So that was ELA. Now we'll go to math, and this again shows that achievement split or gap between non-low-income and low-income, and again then for females and males. We don't have that much of a split, but as I told you last meeting, we do go through and look school by school, and there are some schools or some grade levels that have a pretty big gap, and we're identifying and working with the staff to address those concerns. Also wanted to attempt to explain in a very short amount of time the complexity that goes into the summative designations that were new last year but keep changing and evolving. So, uh, if you look at the chart up here, all of the 2018, uh, we had several schools that were underperforming, lots of schools that were commendable. 2019, we have one school that's exemplary and three that are underperforming, and the rest are commendable. So you say, Faith, what does that mean? How do we get those designations? So to be exemplary, you have to be in the top 10% of all of the schools. You also can have no subgroup that is in the lowest or below the lowest 5%. Uh, then you look at what is commendable or what is underperforming, and there are many, many, many different factors, and I'll show you a graph here in a little bit that will explain that even more. So all of the academics that go into that, we have our English Language Arts or ELA and our math growth. You have high school graduation. You also have EL or English Learner Progress to Proficiency. Now we've added the Science Proficiency. There are all different pieces that go into those designations. There's also school quality indicators, looking at chronic absenteeism and also the student surveys and staff surveys, and then our ninth graders that are on track only at the high school level, of course. This shows all the different percentages that go into those designations, and it is different from K8 to high school. There are different indicators at the high school level. Uh, you'll see that chronic absenteeism is part of that, the growth factor for students that are making the amount of predicted growth from last year to this year on tests. The proficiency overall level, the science indicators, the climate survey, and then all of the different percentages of the piece of pie of the designation that happens. So first we collect and calculate the performance data that goes to the state. They convert it to an indicator score, they weight and aggregate it in an index score, and then they push it to us in a summative designation. It's the quickest I've ever gone through Illinois Report Cards and information. What can, what questions do you have for me?
So let me start by saying, you know, congratulations to the teachers of this district, to the administration that's been focused on what we need to do, and clearly we're getting it done. Um, my, I have some, a couple of quick comments and then a question, maybe for a later day. I, like maybe some others, got quickly asked, well, wait a minute, why was East exemplary and OHS wasn't? As I started going through the data, and I know I can't see all of it, um, it looked to me like the biggest, the biggest factors, um, for OHS was that they had 22% chronic absenteeism, and they also had, um, some feeder schools that are not high on the ranking. There's more to that, correct, or is that, are those-
There is some more to that, and the feeder schools, they show that as what's coming into the school, but the actual school doesn't get scores based on what their feeder schools designations were.
So we, at, at, at the board level and actually all the way down to the, the Finance Committee level, we've had discussions over the years about attendance and how that affects the district financially. Are there specific things that we're looking at between the two high schools? Chronic absenteeism for this building is 13%, it's 22% down the road. That's a pretty big swing from a percentage basis, so are there specific items that you or other folks in the district are, are trying to get that school to think about?
Yes, uh, there are some different coatings of actual events, uh, that we need to make sure that both schools, such as suspensions and those kind of things, wouldn't be considered in absence be- because we've imposed that, but we have to make sure that they're actually coding that correctly, uh, and doing that. Uh, we also need to make sure that we are reinforcing a positive attendance equally between two. I know that Heather Kincaid, our Director of High School Instruction, has had a couple of meetings and has another big meeting coming up to identify the differences between the two schools. Um, some of it could be actual attendance, some of it could be how they're recording attendance.
Great, and then the, the question for a later day. While I like to see the breakout of the subgroups, I'm always concerned about the subgroups, that they're not performing at the same level. Um, it seems to me, based on some number I have tucked in my head from years before, that some of our subgroups are actually performing better than they historically have in the districts. Um, and I'd just be curious, at some point, to get more information, are we seeing a higher level of growth in the subgroups than we are in the overall students, and, and that would be an indication that, that processes and practices that we've put in place to target the subgroups are actually working the way that they're designed to?
Right, I have gone through and have some of them at the top of my head, but it's probably not easy for me to say for all of the 20 schools, um, or more, but they, there are great pockets of success, uh, where we've seen a different subgroup, especially at specific schools, really increase over the last few years. It's a little difficult for us at the elementary to track that progress as much because the test keeps changing, um, but definitely at the high school level, there's been some growth at both schools in some of the subgroup areas.
I, I'll just, you know, I'm not, I ju- I just know in years past, I think the first thing that we had to address was that there are, there were in this district at one point, unfortunately, a few people that had, um, I don't want to say negative, but weren't quite sure that some of these groups could actually perform at a higher level. Uh, that came out several years ago, and I think we've been addressing it. And so I, those are the type of things I'm, I'm hoping we continue to, to work on.
Yes, and with all the conversations that I've had about Tier One, that is Tier One for all students, and looking in to see how our instruction, like if we do find a gap, whether it's gender, whether it's race, whether it's non-low-income to low-income, putting those steps in place and knowing the groups, not only by aggregate are we doing better, but by those different groups.
Item 8, Approval of the Consent Agenda.
I make a motion to approve all items under consent, including 8.1, minutes from the October 21st, 2019 Board of Education Meeting, Open and Close Session, and from the November 4th, 2019 Board of Education Public Forum. 8.2, to acknowledge the FOIA requests, and 8.3, to approve the following board policy references and legal updates. Section 2, School Board, 2:240. Section 3, under General Administrations, 3:10 and 3:60. Section 4, Operational Services, 4:90. Section 5, General Personnel, 5:35, 5:40, 5:130, 5:310. Section 6, Instruction, 6:110. Section 7, Students, 7:170.
Mrs. Croner?
Aye.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Aye.
Mrs. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Information.
Item 9.1, does the Board have any questions regarding 9.1, fin- information statements? Financial statements? All right, Item 9.2, at the October 21st Board of Education Meeting, we presented the Calendar Committee's recommendation for the 2021 calendar. At that meeting, the Board asked us to reconvene the committee to address some items that were discussed at that meeting. The Calendar Committee met on November 6th, and we are presenting recommendations from that committee meeting to the Board as information for your consideration this evening. As you can see from the newly presented calendar, the number of school improvement dates has decreased from the, where we currently are at, six, to three, with each of those three school improvement dates occurring consistently on Fridays. We are proposing to start the school year, the third Wednesday in August, and we are able to still end prior to Memorial Day Weekend. Our Parent Teacher Conference Day in November is on an election day, and the April Institute Day is also on an election day, which means we're not closing schools on election days when schools are used as polling places, rather, we're being strategic with the placement of our non-student attendance days. The Calendar Committee felt this calendar addressed the questions the Board posed on October 21st. Uh, so my only question is for you, what questions do you have for us? If any.
Thank you for going back and looking at it.
We had a, we had a great meeting, we really did. We had a, we had some really, uh, good in-depth discussion, so it was good, and I think the process worked well.
I, I think I want to just echo that word of thanks, I don't, sometimes it's, it's used loosely, and I'm sure it's frustrating to, to have meetings and spend time and go over something like this and, and push it up to the Board and, wow, you know, it's just going to fly through, and then to be, um, kind of picked apart or nitpicked. Um, and just a reminder, I don't think, it's not a reflection of anyone's commitment or the work of the district, but you know, we, we sit here as representative parents and citizens, and we question, why, why do things happen, and how would that affect, um, us as residents and citizens? So, um, those are merely, you know, suggestions and inputs, but the, the work that has gone into and the reevaluation, I think it's greatly appreciated and, and, um, it, it is respected work that is done, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the committee did a great job. I think that having gone through the process of having the discussion and hearing from the committee members, that was helpful because I think it is hard for them, and I think that it would be great if in the future of boredom, um, we had more information about how those different things happen. I think Maureen shed some light on how there's contractual language and things like that that affect what ends up being our calendar, so I think probably the Board needs more education on that somehow, probably.
All right, Item 9.3, thank you. Uh, Board Policies for First Read. The policies listed in 9.3 were discussed at the October 28th Policy Committee Meeting and are being brought to the Board for information. What questions does the Board have in regards to any of the policies that are being brought forward for information this evening?
I have a couple that I didn't want to hog all the time.
That's all right, Brent, go ahead.
I'll start, all right. I just had a, a, a thought regarding, um, the district policy on sixth day, vacation days and holidays and-
Which, uh, policy are you referring to, Brent?
Five dash three- Five dash three thirty. And it, it's something that I'm seeing more in the business world and I know people like my friend Ally here cringe when I say that. But I'm seeing companies are starting to not just encourage people to take an active role in their community, but they're actually giving employees a day off for community service. And so I thought it was just might be an interesting idea to say, hey, in, in the first tier there where we're, meaning you're employed for zero to five years and you're getting twelve vacation days for twelve-month employees, what if we had ten vacation days, one personal day, and one community service day? That could be used by, in any way that the employee feels appropriate. And all they have to do is provide a sentence or two on, to their supervisor as to what they did on that day. The second thing I wanted to, this is more of a comment thing, is, is I read six forty, which is curriculum development, we talk about making sure that we're adhering to state rules and minimums. I'd like us to be a little more progressive and talk about how our policy and our goal of the district is to exceed state minimums and standards in all areas.
We took out, I think we took out the five years so that we could up that. We just didn't have an actual, right now we're kind of playing catch-up a little bit in some areas. So we took out the timeframe to make it so that we could at some point...
Yeah, I, I was just, I guess I'm just looking for a little more aspirational language than pres- prescriptive.
We struggled with it for a little while.
Yeah, we did. We spent quite a bit of time on that one, didn't we?
Yeah.
What, what was the, what was the time spent on and what was the struggle?
We, so there, you could probably speak better to it.
Sure. One of the things that was talked about, because there's language on, there had been a five-year curriculum review cycle and we took out the five-year because there are some things that maybe need to happen faster than that. And there are also maybe times for a particular course that it could go slower than that. And we want to be able to dictate that by the needs identified from staff and from our community, not just on a calendar cycle. So that was part of the discussion that was held there. And then we did have conversations back and forth regarding, this is language that comes to us from press that has been vested and whether or not you want to go beyond what press says or make it different, then it's not as defensible or streamlined with other districts. Our, we can build and go past what is in policy all the time. We can't come much behind it. So it feels like it gives us some more freedom sometimes to leave it at is and build what we want, but it doesn't tie our hands if budget or other things or, or it changes. So there was a lot of discussion about whether you go with what a lot of the districts in the state of Illinois do and then push past in practice, or do you push past it in actual policy language?
And if the board decides it's something that we really want to push, then you put it in as a goal. In a, in a contract, which makes sense.
What, what kind of, what are we talking about? The goal being to...
Well, just like if you want to renew, if you want to renew the math curriculum or if you want to update your...
Or like with the strategic planning process, where one of the items that is still there and everybody seems to be getting excited about is looking at what does the future of communication look like and going much past what the state standards are for writing and communication. And there's a lot of momentum around that. If that comes to fruition, that would be things that we're putting that's past a minimum requirement, but things that we've decided here in three oh eight are important to us and want to build past what is the minimum. So things like that.
Well, like, you know, science renews every time somebody changes their mind about how they should teach it.
Right.
Which is not always...
Or PE.
Right, which is not always five years or seven years or ten years, yeah.
All right, item nine point five, extension of real estate broker contract to sell the District three oh eight center property.
Nine point four.
You skipped my favorite.
Oh, yes, I, I did that last time. I skipped something.
Nice try.
Yeah, yeah. Nine point four, new high school elective courses. Faith, would you like to take us there?
Sure. So, and you did get some late information today and I, in the future, will send all of the new course report, proposal information in its entirety. That was a learning curve for me on what the board might want. But please know that our high schools had done much of their due diligence and worked through many different course proposals, only two of which made it to the final strands here as we look at what is ready and, and what's not. The two courses that we're bringing forth tonight, one is residential construction and you can see the requirements and the pieces that would be in that. We've had a lot of interest as we go through talking about the strategic plan with creating not just students, not just pathways to college and are we all taking AP-level classes? We're also, are we preparing students for life? And are we preparing them and giving them taste into different types of pathways? And this course would be bringing back some of the things that we had had in the past with residential construction, like learning how to do concrete, learning about flooring, learning about roofing, doing all of those things and doing that in-sight. We have a lot of the tools already. We are not needing to redo lab space or purchase textbooks, anything to do that. And the materials that could be needed, as you'll see in that pieces, would come out of the Career and Tech Ed Perkins Grant. The other course that we are talking about is spoken word and it would be a high school senior elective. Again, it was interesting to me that, I didn't go talk to the department chairs until later about the strategic planning process, but the English Department had said, we really need more of an avenue for students to be able to tell their story, whether it's in video or whether it's in giving speeches, because a lot of even job applications and college applications are creating a video and putting that out. And here, the English Department had said, we have a hole in our, in our elective offerings and we'd really like to push that. And then I got up and talked to them about the strategic planning process and like, yes! That's one of the things. So this was already in the works before that, but this would just be added to the different senior electives that students are already able to take. I do know that I have Heather Kincaid in the audience. If you have more in-depth conversations or questions that you have about the conversations she's had with the teaching staff and with administration at the high schools.
I'm super excited to see building trades back in. I am, I am the, I am married into a building trades, what do you call it, graduate? And I reap the benefits of that every time something breaks in my house.
Well, I, I want to make sure that I understand this isn't the building trades...
It's not, no.
Okay, okay. It's the skills that building trades encompass, but it won't be purchasing any houses or lots or anything. Although, let's talk about that later. But, Warden?
There's growth.
Of course, there's always room for growth, but this particular course will not include the purchase of a lot or a building. But this also has the opportunity to do some good things in the community. As we talk about community service, it talks about taking some of these old dilapidated houses in and around the area, fixing them up. And yeah, I mean, it's got huge potential, like an endless possibility.
But is that what this is? Because I was, I was, this is, learning how to do different skills. That's a, that's a different aspirational...
He's talking about the practical application of those flips being available.
Look, look in the future.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm out there.
So, a couple...
I'm a lot skinnier in the future.
Couple of questions about, I learned how to put in a garbage disposal last week, so... Yeah, it was good times. It was future.
New tutorial in this class.
Yeah. In any event, my questions regarding the courses, I have several. One, the, the building trades has been something that, or the career pathways is something that is an area for jobs growth in, in our state and in our region. But how do we set the standards for what these students need to learn or will be learning in a class like this? Is this at the instructor's discretion? Is there a, a basis for standard acceptable practices? How, how do you determine the curriculum for this kind of course?
So the objectives of the course, they need to show that they have the safety precautions and those pieces that, so...
Right, but where did those objectives come from is what I'm asking?
So...
Whatever the objectives are.
And I don't know if Ms., if Heather would like to come and talk more about that, but there are already classes similar to this or that we've had in the past where those guidelines are already created. There are already career and tech ed classes in other high schools that you can take some of those things from. And I think I hear the rattle of crutches that Heather's come into the table as well.
I believe Mr. Allen was around when they had building trades.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that if we're trying to add this new pathway, that we, we are indeed adding courses and curriculum and standards and practices that will in fact make our students employable.
So for the residential construction, what they did was they looked at the skills that would be necessary for the building trades courses. And from there, as Faith mentioned, looked at safety first because obviously that's an underlying for everything. And then looked at different courses not only in the area, but then talked to Valleys in terms of what are some of those skills that are most in demand now? And that's where they built out some of the units that will be part of the course. So that's where they came up with that draft syllabus that Faith had provided, is what is kind of not only most in demand, but also what will be most beneficial thinking towards the future. So it's really in conjunction with Valleys, talking about what are some of those skills and then also looking at what are some of the current offerings in the area. And then thirdly is really our faculty. So we have faculty that has experience in construction and in the trades. So it was talking amongst the teachers at both high schools about what would be beneficial skills that's not already part of our woodworking sequence that we want to provide to students in addition to what they could already get in some of our pre-existing courses.
And are both teachers working together at each of this? Are the teachers working together at both high schools to create comparable syllabus requirements and grading standards?
So we did not accept any courses that were not co-developed by teachers and department chairs at both buildings. So the draft syllabus and what was proposed did come from teachers and department chairs from both buildings. And then the grading is part of an ongoing conversation with the department chairs throughout the year. So we haven't talked about exact, actually, the residential construction did come up with weighted percentages, not in the spoken word one, but they did jointly come up with that distribution. But as we mentioned last month, grading is an ongoing conversation.
And that'll continue next year through PLCs? Or how, how will that continue next year as the class is implemented for adjustments?
So it would have to be through conversations through both of the teachers that are teaching the courses. But we would have grading in terms of the syllabus aligned before the start of the school year. We wouldn't want to continue in terms of the conversations about how the grading was distributed. We want that all settled before the school year starts.
For both courses?
Absolutely.
Has there been any conversation with maybe any of the larger unions representative of the trades as far as what they're looking for, for incoming apprentices into the local unions or any partnerships which will allow the graduates to actually move into their programs?
So we did not, or I did not for this particular course. I did visit and we walked some of the courses at OH with our director from Valleys, both department chairs. And we looked at the manufacturing lab that we have there and talked about some of the internship possibilities that we actually already have students that participated in last year. So that is actually one of the things we had talked about, about joining both high schools together and inviting some, but no, we did not reach out to industry for this particular intro course. But as we look to the future, that is something that both, both DCs have expressed an interest in bringing in.
And transportation costs would be included into the factors for something like that? If you're talking about bringing the high schools together to talk about things, there's buses?
Oh, in terms of bringing in teachers and the department chairs and having like a meeting with, with adults.
The only thing I would like to see added is I would like to see OSHA certification added. I know they have job site safety and they have shop safety, but if you can get these kids OSHA certified, that's just one more feather in their cap.
I will reach out to them to ask about that.
And the other problem with reaching out to the unions in the areas, a lot of the unions right now aren't taking apprentices.
I just to have...
Yeah.
That dialogue and that pathway.
They do have, like, I know the Electricians Union has, I can get you the contact info if you want to have Brian Allen reach out.
I would appreciate that.
Or, yeah, they have some internships too. But you got to be eighteen and you have to be, so these are kids who are graduated.
Right, so these kids take the course and they graduate and we're talking about that career pathway, the non-college pathway. So what are we gearing them for or preparing them for?
Other questions about the courses?
The, the language course.
Spoken word?
Spoken word. So I, I've read through the syllabus, I read through the recommend, recommended texts. Seems like this is a poetry class.
Spoken word is...
You were describing it as it could be speeches, it could be narratives. It's not just a poetry class, is that correct?
It's not just a poetry class. There are, there's an emphasis on speech. There's also going to be an opportunity to add visuals and those things. It's about telling your story and that could be something that you would need at a job interview. That's a video. It could be something that you would provide. Colleges, when you're, how do you incorporate your voice? What do you stand for? What are the things that you are, how do you present yourself?
Is this part of the commu- sorry, is this part of the communications thing that you were talking about? That you'd had an interest in expanding?
It wasn't because of anything I said. This was all in the works and brought to me. But yes, it does meet some of those changes in communication. If you think about the difference between, you know, writing a five-paragraph essay or a research paper compared to, can you grab someone with your story? And you've got two minutes to be able to, you know, convince someone or say who you are and what you're about. That's, that's different than some of our more formal or more traditional types of, of writing. And both are, are needed. This is not a required course, it's an elective course, but it does meet some of those needs that our English department felt we needed to fill that void. And that is something that I also see across the state and I would probably even say the nation, although I don't know the other states' curriculum near as well, as adapting and knowing our, the writing styles that we've all been used to. But also if you think about crafting an email or putting out a video on the strategic planning process or those kinds, it's a different type of communication.
So I understand it's an elective and the prerequisite would be English two. So where does that, where does it fit in the sequence and what I mean by that? Are, are, are we encouraging kids to take this instead of senior English? What, what's the thought behind this?
No, so this does not meet the English graduation credit. So this would meet a core or an open elective credit. So this would not replace at all the four years of traditional English one, English two, English three, English four that a student is required to take for graduation.
So ideally, a kid who feels that they need additional work in this area, more likely a kid that loves English. Right?
Can we talk about the timing here? The information item, it's also on the agenda tonight as an action item. Can we talk about... Can we talk about that a bit?
Sure. Um, so we have the high school course catalog that we would like to put out. Uh, and I'll take ownership for this one as well. When we were thinking, we had two meetings in November, when I looked on my calendar, long time ago, didn't realize that the board forum meeting would not be a meeting that we would do some of that work in. So in working backwards, uh, on these pieces, I realized this is not ideal. We would usually do information and then action. But in order to meet the timeline of the course catalog, um, we want to have both of those things happen tonight. That's why I had put information, uh, out to people ahead of time. I wish to answer any questions and things that you have tonight so that we can move forward and have these offerings in the books.
The course catalog, when you say to meet the timeline of the course catalog, can you expand on that a little bit?
So, um, starting this week, we will do teacher recommendations. Um, so we want to make sure that we put out the course catalog. So students will start to be able to read about the courses that they can select. Once, uh, teacher recommendations close, then we'll open up the window for student course requests. So again, we want this information to be out there so they could read to be able to select the classes in addition to the ones that are recommended by the teacher. So if we are able to offer these two new courses, then we would make sure the course catalog is updated and on the website to reflect additional offerings.
Can I ask, it's probably a very dumb question, but since I'm not in the education or high school world, I, I'm hearing you say that you're opening it up next week, which is this third week of November for teacher recommendations. Some kids start new classes in January, so how can they have recommendations for next year, less than halfway through?
So recommendations are only done for the core subjects, so our year-long courses, English, math, science, social studies and world language.
But they haven't even had a full semester's grade yet.
Correct. So our timeline is, uh, Faith has mentioned, is that we have all FTE requests submitted, uh, to the district office by the end of February. So from there, we want to make sure that we have built in time for the high school to process all of their, uh, course recommendations, that we give the counselors time to meet with individual students, to go through their, uh, course requests, that we have an opportunity to send home the selected courses so parents can view that. And that we have our two windows that are coming up in the next two to three weeks about teacher recommendations and course requests. So once we back up all of those wants of not only our teachers, our students, our faculty, but communication with parents, this is, this is where we, we end up. Um, and a lot of the chunk of time is, is really to make sure that our counselors have adequate time to meet with our students on a one-to-one basis.
Do we still have minimum enrollments for electives?
Um, we have not gotten to that point, but I would anticipate that that would be a conversation over the next month or so.
Well, wait a second, I'm gonna back up on that one just because I, I, I thought that that was part of our budget reduction conversation a few years ago, and I know that that wasn't where you were at.
Usually it's 20 for, for a section.
We, we do have a standard for that though, is what I'm trying to get to, yeah? Okay.
I apologize, we just haven't got, because we don't have requests, we haven't got to the point where we're sectioning.
Right, we're not close to that point.
That'll happen in January.
Right.
I've, I've one more question on that English course. What would you have to do to it to make it? What's the word I'm looking for?
Meet the English requirements?
Right.
So all of our standard English requirements, um, meet all four domains and are really aligned to our Illinois State Standards in either nine through 10 or 11 and 12. So we would need to ensure that they were aligned to that. But as Faith was describing before, in terms of your traditional English one through four, we really want to make sure that they're more writing intensive in terms of the structured process of kind of the, the, the college pathway. Um, so this being only a semester, we would have to pair it with something to make sure that we were covering all standards.
Why I ask is as a mom of several boys who are not English. Loving. Yeah. I mean, I'm sure there are plenty out there, but like my oldest one went the whole path and the whole, and my second oldest was anything I can do to get out of it. So I still want him to have his basic requirements and he went in the army, so.
So, and that's really where.
Not every kid is college bound.
Yes, opens up and there are quite a few offerings during senior year.
Right, that's what I mean, so that's what I'm getting at. So as an offering for senior year, so I don't have to take writing for college, whatevers, when I'm never going to college.
There are quite a few other offerings already built. So this being elective and opened after, um, we're targeting multiple grade levels.
Yeah. I was just hoping it was an elective for.
Can I ask one more question? I'm hearing a lot about this being a writing intensive class, but it's labeled spoken word. And it says students will practice speaking and listening skills. So can you, can you tell me if it? It says it can complement creative writing. What I'm, what I'm wondering is, is what is the intent of this to create a communications writing course to promote oneself? Or is the intent to focus on spoken word as it's performed?
No, and I apologize if I misspoke. The reason why it wouldn't count as your traditional English is because it's not as, in writing intensive as English one through three. So this really takes the writing that students completes and focuses a lot on the expression and how they're going to communicate and, uh, display themselves and really trying to get not only their voice and their structure, but then really taking it into the communication of how they're going to project that to an audience.
And I guess, um, if you think about the writing process and, um, performing a speech, there's a lot of writing and planning that goes into the delivery of a speech, uh, as well. It may be not written all out in, uh, you know, and, and being very careful about punctuation, but the same process, uh, happens that who's your audience? What are you trying to convince? What's your organization? Is your grammar correct when you're giving a speech or whether you're creating a video? Or whether you're writing those pieces, all of that? And I think that's what I'm excited, uh, you know, and what there is seeming to resonate when we talk with staff of that same process in your head of what is good communication. Uh, there's a lot of overlap between writing, uh, and speaking and having that, um, same checklist, if you will, of what is good communication. So yes, there's a lot of times that writing is on here, but writing and planning something out to give a speech or to video still happens with storyboarding or note cards. Um, you, you still need a plan that you would follow for some of the writing pieces.
So the, this isn't something that you would ever develop into what you were talking about prior to this about next generation communication skills or, um, presentations? This is more meant to be something, as I'd heard earlier, for kids who really love English to have another way to explore that as an elective? Not as a required skill that we want to encourage to all of our students to have?
This would not be a required course, but if strategic planning process keeps going the way it is, we are going to be building those types of skills in many of our requirements.
But that's not what this class is for.
This is not a required.
But this isn't part of the strategic planning process that we're just not even halfway through?
No, it just happened to identify a certain need.
Cause for argument's sake, can you just, when you go back and talk to them about this? Can you ask about maybe adding a, since we're talking about how you present yourself out in the world? Maybe adding a digital citizenship piece? I mean, if you read some of the comments on Facebook even, like, I think what a lot of us are seriously lacking is some good citizenship.
One last thought. Um, the, the syllabus stated that this was, let me find the, the verbiage. Uh, shaped by young Chicago authors. And it seems like going through the website, there was, um, kind of dabbles in, um, a lot of social issues, maybe a little plus some political issues as well. So how much of their, their purpose and their program is going into this syllabus for us, we go?
So I know that they took a look at kind of that structure and the spoken word, uh, competitions, but they did meet themselves and come up with the units and the structure. Um, so where they do have some ties to Chicago, um, I'm looking specifically like at unit four. There are some just general who am I and what is my story? So it's not a complete match, but there were some guiding elements, um, from that. And then obviously in some of the reading, uh, we'll look at some of the videos, some of the poems and things. So, but, um, they, the teachers themselves, uh, did structure the, the courses and the units for the course.
Our internal teachers?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, item nine point five. Item nine point five is an extension of the real estate broker contract to sell the District 308 center property. Kristy?
Yes, excuse me. So it is, our current contract does expire, um, December 29th. So, uh, to give the board two opportunities of information and a recommendation at the next board meeting. Uh, we're bringing this tonight to renew for another 120 days.
Are there any questions regarding that?
No, but can we add a reason for closed session? To include the real estate transactions? It'll make sense.
Okay.
All right, item nine point six is our operating referendum discussion. Can, uh, have that presentation please brought up? And Kristy, if you want to grab the clicker, please?
Thank you.
At the October 7th meeting, Kristy and I presented two five-year projection scenarios. Uh, tonight's information is a short recap of those two scenarios presented and to allow the board to ask any additional questions. On, under action this evening, the board will be asked to provide a resolution, providing for the submission of the proposition of increasing the eliminating rate to the voters. If the board approves that action item, uh, later on this evening, we will then discuss, uh, for information, any items that the board may want to include as rollbacks from previous cuts if the referendum were to pass in March. So under scenario one, if you remember from, uh, the October meeting, uh, we, the first scenario is to maintain our current practices, which means to continue to sell bonds for our capital projects and technology, uh, continue, continue issuing tax anticipation warrants. And if we continue with the recurrent reductions and the current fee schedule, the following should occur. So on the next slide, as I spoke about in October, there are two yellow, two yellow lines there, two bars that I'd like to draw your attention to. The first one is the surplus deficit line. And as you can see, we have our, our surplus in each of the five years moving fa-, uh, moving forward with a balanced budget. Um, and if you look at the projected year-end balance on bottom, you can see where we currently are projecting our year-end balance at a 17.6 million at the end of the, uh, the fiscal year FY 20 and where we will end up in fiscal year 2025, maintaining our current practices that I just mentioned. Scenario number two is a scenario that includes a successful operating rate referendum, which is a 30 cent operating rate increase beginning in the 2021 tax collection year. It allocates 3 million annually to address board priority four without the, without the future sale of bonds. Uh, it would include the reduction of TAW amounts issued over time. And it includes the items listed in the next slide. Those are the different items that are also included in, uh, in this scenario. Um, it's important to remember that any of these items can be taken off, they could be adjusted or the board could add different items. Um, and obviously anything that would be changed, just, uh, which would, uh, would it would change our five-year projections as they are currently listed. So the next, I'd like to draw your attention to those same two bars in scenario number two. The surplus deficit, you can see the, uh, each of the five years moving forward with a successful referendum. Uh, we have a larger surplus as compared to the first scenario. And then on the second bar, the bottom gold bar, the projected year-end balance, uh, we have the same starting FY 20, uh, year-end balance, but at the end of the, uh, five years, at the end of FY 2025, you can see that the ending balance is projected to be just a little under $38 million, uh, which does, which would then coincide with our board policy and what the board would like to see in our reserves moving forward. So with that, those were, that was a short recap of the presentation that was, uh, provided to the board um, earlier in October, on October 7th. And as I mentioned, uh, that was the, that was the purpose of the, uh, presentation for this evening. And I wanted to open up the floor for any conversation, questions, dialogue that the board may have in regards to these scenarios or anything else that pertains to them.
Sure, love to. So look, there's no, there's no dancing around this. Tonight, we're being asked to actually vote twice to potentially raise taxes. That's the truth, right? We're gonna vote on the levy. And then we're gonna vote on putting out, um, potentially putting out a, uh, a change in the operating referendum. We, as a board, as a district, as a community, put a lot of effort and work over the last now three years in cutting areas because we had no choice, in raising fees because we had no choice. And as we see here in scenario one, there is a, a, a path to a more stable future for the district. I think that's great. I find it difficult and problematic that after now two failed referendums, now I understand the sales tax is not the same as an operating referendum, but essentially we've asked the taxpayers of, of District 308 twice now if they agree that we should raise taxes to fund schools. They've said no. I get it. I, I, I understand, you know, Mrs. Morgan's, um, standpoint that she made last week. We're, we're giving people the option. I tend to look at this a little bit differently as I, as I know you guys know. And, and I'm focused on what we're doing to the larger community in the sense of what we're doing to home values when we increase property taxes in the highest taxed county in the state. That's the reality. So for those reasons, I cannot vote, uh, for either tax increase measure this evening.
And I just want to clarify that I don't see it as a tax increase, um, vote because I believe that putting the referendum on the ballot is giving people in the community an opportunity to decide for themselves as a whole, whether they would like to have that happen or not. And I understand in the past that we did ask people and they said no with their votes. But I feel like there's a certain lag in communication between what's going on with the school district and when the referendum vote is being taken. And so I think that after a while, it, it, literally after the vote, a lot of people realized what was at stake and that some of those folks had not realized. And so as a board member, I feel like we have to give them the opportunity now that you know that this is what you can have or not have, here's an opportunity to vote on the referendum again. And that's just the way I see it.
Yeah, that, that's fair. And, and, and the other thing that keeps striking in my mind is, look, I understand that people aren't always paying attention to what we're doing, that's the reality, but people live busy lives. Um, and after the reality set. And after the reality set in and they started to learn and friends and neighbors started talking and they got more engaged. One of the things that I'm constantly remembering, and, and we saw it again here tonight, is that the majority of public comment has been around sports. And, and that's, this is not a criticism, but that's sad, right? I would expect the opposite. I would expect that seventy percent or eighty percent of the people that come to speak to the board would be focused on what it means from an academic standpoint, right? But no, we seem to be focused on sports.
I had hoped to also hear more comments about class size because I think that class size makes a huge difference in the lives of students. We've heard a couple, we have, but not nearly as many as we've had from sports.
I would, I would agree with Tony and I feel like we have overwhelmingly week after, you know, meeting after meeting, heard from the public who is coming here in person and, and making this request of us to, to give it another chance. And that's, we're here to respond to what the public is asking us. And giving both viewpoints, I mean, I, I don't want my taxes to go, I pay a lot, a lot of property taxes. I got a big house and, but I think opportunity for either, you know, both viewpoints to have a dialogue and a discussion about their reasoning behind thing. And I too am disappointed that it seems to be very much focused just on junior high sports, junior high sports when, as if there's no other opportunity for kids to do anything, we're removing everything from them. But I also think class size is a much bigger problem. I know in the elementary level, it's certainly a problem with twenty-eight kids in a, in a small classroom. Makes it difficult to learn. I have a junior high kid who has thirty-three, thirty-six kids. And it's, he is easily distracted and that does not help.
If you think it doesn't matter, just imagine having somebody drop off six kids in the morning that you need to get ready for school, that you didn't know we're gonna have to get ready for school because even six to eight kids makes a huge difference in how much you're able to get done. So I think, I think we've, we've said it about class size. I hope people are hearing that it matters to the students and the teachers in the classroom.
I, I also see it as an opportunity to, to give the community another opportunity to speak and, and, and tell us what they are, where we're at, again, where, what, what values we're kind of holding dear. I think it's again, just an opportunity that we're giving the community. I also see it as a valid path to achieving some of the long-term financial goals that we are hoping to, to achieve in terms of that, you know, board priority and, and moving our reserve forward and, and just being a little bit more stable, so.
Yeah, so taking the vote to put it on the ballot is a response to, I think, the most vocal of parents regarding the referendum issue. Yes, we had public comment tonight. Ms. Jackson came up and spoke regarding it. But at our forum last week, we had a, a record number of parents and community members out at a board member forum. And they talked about just having the opportunity to do this. So I think having to take that feedback from the forum and allow that to take place is, is an appropriate action. Does not mean that I support or do not support the referendum, but it is something that obviously a large percentage of the population wants to hear. Now, if there is a large enough amount of the population that wants to publicly put together an anti-referendum push, then, then so be it. But this is a much larger discussion than for the seven of us. And it's the opportunity for the entire 308 population to, to voice their opinions on. So that's why I'll, I'll vote to place it on the, on the ballot.
Let me preface this by saying I have a junior high kid in sports. And I have had several junior high kids in sports over the years, but I don't think that we're hearing from everyone. I think there is a huge silent majority that we're not hearing from. And while I agree, it's, it's up to the voters. I also, I'm, I struggle with when everybody shows up in their green shirts and I do support you because again, my kids all played sports. For years, they still play in college. I have a hard time explaining to my neighbors who can't pay their bills. Because our bills went up this year, every one of my neighbors, by about anywhere between four hundred and six hundred dollars.
I just, and I just want to say that I, I appreciate everybody, every parent that has come out and spoke and every community member that has come out and spoken. I appreciate the fact that you're advocating on behalf of your students and, and your neighbors and your, and, and everybody. So, you know, I don't want this in any way to, you know, be a chast, you know, chastising about, you know, coming up and speaking about, you know, something that's really important to you. I too, you know, have said, I'm very, very concerned about some of the academic cuts that we have had to make and implement over the last couple of years. Those are the things that keep me up at night on top of the sports piece. So I just, I do want to say that, you know, I think, you know, you, you have, I appreciate again, the community and the parents that have come out and you have been heard. But some of these core academic things are another reason why I, the class sizes and some of the other things that we were kind of looking at that really impacts our students in the classroom is another reason why I, I think it's really important to consider moving this forward in a way that gives people an opportunity to, to vote.
I'm going to add my own comments here, which are that again, you know, I'm taking very seriously the fact that we don't get to decide as seven people on a board whether or not to increase the base amount of the tax levy. We have, as a school board, very limited opportunities to increase the revenue to our school district. We are by and large at the will of other public entities. Our families, our community is kind of at the will of other entities in terms of impact fees or state funding or federal funding or grants. Property taxes are a form of local control that we have in our community. And, and while I really, really am concerned about class sizes, I also know that when I looked at the state report cards, it was great. We're above state average, but the meets or exceeds, I mean meets, basic standards for English still isn't really much above fifty percent. That's, that's fifty percent. That, that's half. Half are not meeting these standards. And I know that for those students that are nearing expectations, they may need the extra activity, the extra sport, the extra elective to encourage them to, to work with teachers in a way that they can help themselves achieve more. I, I think that having these opportunities is important. I think that it's really important as we look at all of the buildings that we've built during the building boom, now reaching the same age at the same time. It's kind of like having, I don't know what fifteen tuplets would be. But if you had those all going to college for the first time the same year, that's kind of where our buildings are, are at. I mean, even to things like not being able to complete courses. If say all the ovens break at the same time in a home ec. class or all the kilns in an art class, if they all break at the same time, you know, we need to be able to provide those things for the courses we already have students enrolled in. We need to be able to continue to retain staff that can teach our students the things in the next wave of educational future that they'll need to know and for the careers that are coming in the future. I feel really strongly about all those things. Obviously, sitting here, all seven of us feel very strongly about the need for quality education in our community. But I think for me on this, I'm looking more at whether or not the, the cuts that we would have to continue to make to achieve the needs that we have are really something that we can decide without public input. And yeah, we've had it before. We've had it one time before. Our sales tax referendum actually would have also in our policy voted to abate that to reduce property taxes. But the property tax levy has been on the ballot the one time before, again, before some of these were, issues were felt, before some of the cuts had been implemented and people really had a chance to understand what those mean in their daily lives and for their students. So I think that given the, the, the public support for wanting to have another chance, I don't know that with the severity of the things that we continue to look at for our students that we can really, that I can really in good conscience not give our community a, a chance to, to make a decision either, either way. Because these things are very serious and, and they continue to impact our students, not just for the next couple of years, but for the next ten years. So that's pretty much all I have to add to it.
If there are no other questions, you can go ahead and move on to your action items.
Item ten point one. Bills per payment.
I make a motion to authorize the payment of bills in the amount of three million, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Mrs. Croner?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mrs. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Item ten point two.
I make a motion to uphold the disciplinary action regarding student 2019 dash one as discussed in closed session.
Second. Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Mr. Lightfoot?
No.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mrs. Moyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Croner?
Aye.
Motion passes six one. Item ten point three.
I make a motion to adopt the two new high school elective courses as presented, residential construction and spoken word.
Second.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Aye.
Mrs. Moyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Croner?
Aye.
Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Item ten point four.
I make a motion to approve the shared services intergovernmental agreement as presented.
Second. Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Croner?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mrs. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Item ten point five.
I make a motion to adopt the 2019 tax levy as presented.
Second. Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Mr. Lightfoot?
No.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Swanson?
No.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mrs. Moyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Croner?
Aye.
Motion passes five two. Item ten point six.
I make a motion to approve the resolution providing for and requiring the submission of the proposition of increasing the limiting rate under the property tax extension limitation law to the voters of Oswego Community Unit School District Number 308, Kendall, Kane and Will Counties, Illinois, at the general primary election to be held on the seventeenth day of March, 2020 as presented.
Second. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Swanson?
No.
Mrs. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. Lightfoot?
No.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mrs. Croner?
Aye.
Mrs., Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Motion passes five two. Item ten point seven.
I make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Second. Mrs. Swanson?
No.
Mrs. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
No.
Mrs. Croner?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mr. Lightfoot?
No.
Motion passes four three. Item eleven information.
All right, now that the board has decided to put the referendum question back on the March 17th ballot, we'd like to have a discussion of the potential rollbacks if the referendum is successful. Kristy's provided the items and the associated costs that we've talked about rolling back in the past. The goal of tonight's conversation will be for the board to provide direction and the direction to the administration so that we can come back hopefully on December 9th to be able to approve what, what items from the previous year's cuts may need to be altered, added, eliminated or changed for the, if the referendum were to be successful in March.
Can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
And maybe you guys talked about this when I was not here. Where it says third through fifth grade from thirty kids to twenty-eight. What happens if you take that to twenty-six?
I would have to come back with that number.
If I remember correctly, it was somewhere around one million. It was about two hundred and twenty, two hundred and thirty thousand more.
Can you?
Yep.
Yeah, thanks.
Three through five to twenty-six.
Well, just because I, I think our biggest, if you're gonna, if you're gonna get these kids and get them early and get them the help they need, then you need to do it while they're earlier.
Yeah.
So I, I, I think in ongoing conversations, I've become more concerned about our class sizes in junior high. And that is something that I'm thinking more about. And I'm wondering about, about that. And if we could get some numbers related to, to that. And then, you know, I think that there has to be, you know, a give and take. And so, so yeah, I mean, that's something that I think across the board would be something I'd be interested in, in looking more about. And I can't remember, what are our?
It is thirty-two and it had been thirty if I remember correctly. So in phase one, it was increase the class size deviser, excuse me, used to create sections from thirty, thirty, thirty to thirty-two for core and world languages. And that was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars at that time.
So if we can see numbers for that and maybe offset that with, I believe I've heard information about how the increase in activity in club fees as well as sports fees hasn't had as significant an impact on participation as we had thought that it might. So maybe instead of, you know, reducing high school sports fees down to one fifty, which is still double what it used to be, maybe the first sport is the three hundred and then a second sport would be the one fifty or some sort of cap or reduction. Just to make up for, like, I would rather see better class sizes at the junior high level.
Right.
If, if we have to. And the same thing with the fees for clubs and, and activities.
What, what was the, what was the dollar amount on the participation fee that was being used? Can you remind me? Was it tw- twenty?
Twenty dollars on this, yeah.
And that's just a flat for kindergarten through twelfth grade?
And that was
Twenty dollars.
Clubs and activities. Clubs and activities.
Except for the service related, which of course, and honor societies, which will continue to have none.
Right.
Can we talk about a couple of things that I was thinking about, um, one of which uh was brought up actually in public comment. About the driver's ed fee relating to the behind the wheel hours. I've also heard a lot about. The way that our behind the wheel hours don't compare to the amount of hours students. Are able to get through private courses where some are, are buying the school course and private, just to get behind the wheel time. And at that point, can we look at what it would be to bring back down our driver's ed fee a little bit? So that it really more adequately matches the service that we're able to give. I mean, not that it'll be cost neutral, but.
I can see that the behind the wheel time for the private is not. Depending on which package, you could buy different packages which cost different amount. Uh, we buy the silver package, which is, they get a one hour, but it's shared with another.
Okay.
I don't think there's as big a difference between.
I, I, I just don't know. Um, so.
Six thirty minute drive times. And that's just where we, where we choi- might be different other. Places, or maybe it's.
My daughter just got her permit on Friday. I'm having nightmares right now.
It's, it's, it's.
Good time.
Listen, you want more time for her behind the wheel first.
With another person.
And maybe ten extra years of brain.
So in regards, in regards to the driver's ed fee, though, currently.
Not to digress, yeah.
You like to.
Uh, can we see what it would be like to, to, not where it had have been before, but something in the middle? And then also, um, one of the things that we also had increased in fees pretty dramatically was the full day kindergarten fee. Um, can we see what that would look like if we put that back to what it had been prior to this year's change?
So before this year's change was, which was three hundred to five hundred dollars, we moved it from two fifty to three hundred. I'm, I'm sorry, the three hundred to five hundred was two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And that was just implemented for this school year.
Are we able to access any of the birth through five grants toward kindergarten education since a lot of them are still five? Is that an opportunity that we have? Okay. Can, can we see what that would be on that two twenty? Can we put that on there as an opportunity?
So for, for full day kindergarten?
Full day kindergarten.
It's currently five fifty right now, is it?
Five fifty, correct.
And it was two fifty prior to, you know, a couple of years ago, so.
But then we'd put the three hundred in the intermediate to the three hundred.
That's what we're looking at, three hundred?
And my question for Mrs. Tyler is pretty general. Um, I, I would just want to know, most of these, I think that we. Did a pretty good job of agreeing on. We were trying to, you know. Uh, figure out what we can do that would really um. Address some of the concerns that we've heard from the community, but I want to know from you in general, are those numbers still current because. You know, with time, sometimes things change.
So updated numbers for these.
The, these are taken, to be honest, right from the uh, all the financial reduction plans.
Yeah, yes. Updated. I like that, Tony.
Yeah, in December, we'll have this all reconfigured.
Okay, thank you.
With the gifted ed reinstatement. That and class size would, would uh really thrill me to see those re- um, back in the books. However. Do we have the physical space in all the buildings in which to implement this because we know that. Old Post struggles with space, um, Hunt Club struggles with space. I- is there really room in our buildings to be able to have, because we are talking about going back to the, the, the pullout model, correct?
They still have pullout, just not for third grade. So they would still have.
Still a separate, was a separate room.
Right.
Or are we just going to do that modified, well, we'll swap some of these kids with these kids with this teacher? And moving them back and forth in that manner.
I have that, I mean, I have that question ki- uh, sort of as well, like. Is this, and is this a, how would this change? You know, because we, it shifted a lot of like to- the tosas and different things. So. I um, I do, yeah, I do have some more questions about what that would look like and if this is an accurate price tag. And then. Do we have, um, yeah, do we have the space?
And we need to look at the future and the projections of whether you can keep people there because I think that that's. A concern for some of the gifted and talented teachers as what, as to whether they want to accept an assignment, whether they know it will endure, right?
Absolutely. I think that this is all really. I, I think that, yeah, it can't be, you know, stated strongly enough that we're talking about these line items here with. Price tags and numbers and everything, but um, and, and really hopefully what would be a lot of maybe po- could be positive changes. But that it's, we're, we're really disrupting. You know, a lot of thing, people are back and forth and changing and switching buildings and are there, is it secure, does it feel secure and all of that? So I think to make really good decisions. And feel confident in them, we probably need some solid information to read.
So more clarification on what a gifted. Model third grade reinstatement would actually look like in terms of how that would fit with the way. We may need to go with gifted education in general and what adjustments might be made in the near future. Or longer term future.
And that, that's the key longevity.
Yeah.
Um, not to.
Just keep switching every couple of years.
Two years later, reinstate it.
Yeah.
Okay, four years down the road, we've, you know, there's financial struggles again, even though with the, if, if a referendum passes, hopefully it wouldn't, but. Something that can sustain long term.
Yeah, I mean, I think hearing the recommendations from, I, if, uh, we heard recommendations, um, you know, from administrators. When we were looking at our, our long list of cuts and these were the, you know, these were some of the best. In, in less than ideal circumstances, the best that they could do and come up with. But, uh, you know, it's been a couple of years now and so, yeah, what are, what are. Decisions that we could live with and make sense for us now and moving forward.
Okay, anything else? Anyone was thinking about?
All right, it's a good list. Thank you.
So as much as we'd like to move to adjournment, we're gonna go back to some closed session.
Make a motion to enter closed session under statutes ILCS one twenty slash two C two collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. Or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Five ILCS one twenty slash two C six. The setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body.
Second.
Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Swanson.
Aye.
Mrs. Moyer.
Aye.
Mr. Lightfoot.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mrs. Croner.
Aye.
Ms. Morgan.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We're, give five minutes and we'll.